Hello, it is 5:02 PM on September 23rd, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, with Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Ed Skorn, Director Whitfield, Student Representative Sophia Willett. Myron Robinson might be joining us later in the meeting. Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear, the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in Board Doc or Board Workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to Agenda Item 1.05, Approval of the Agenda Is There a Motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated September 23rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated September 23rd, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, the Explorer Mindset. We have a present- presentation from Environmental Studies School and Family Forest School/Sky Valley Education Center, Sabrina Shaw.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Sabrina Shaw. I am a, as you said, an environmental studies teacher. I teach at Sky Valley Education Center, and I'm excited to chat with you about what I did on my summer vacation, which was heading to the Arctic. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I teach and then about the opportunity that I had. I was selected out of 500 applicants. There were 35 teachers from around the US and Canada, so it's pretty prestigious and exciting that I'm able to share that with you. So I teach family forest school, and if you don't know, you know, Sky Valley, we like to do fun things. Those are parents jumping in the leaves. So one day a week, we get to play in the woods with kids, capturing sort of a place-based education with curiosity. And then we're in the left-hand side of the picture there. We're looking at our local streams to identify what type of macroinvertebrates we have, so we can assess the health of those streams. The other three days a week, I am honored to teach in one of our older programs at Sky Valley and see Environmental Studies School, which has been going on for over 25 years. We have students in grades six through 10, and we use the outdoors as our classroom as much as possible. Right now, we're over at the Wagner Center, and we are studying language arts, history, field science, art, and PE, all in those three days with assistance from families outside. We're very, very excited. Throughout my trip and my travels, I found that people kept looking at me and saying, "This is a private school, right?" And I kept reiterating, "No, this is a public school." So I'm very thankful to the support that we have from our board and from our superintendent that we get to have these amazing programs for our kids here at Sky Valley. It's what brought me to the Monroe School District, and my child has never been happier. So thank you for creating this space. This is an example of some of the things that we do. So we are not just about being outdoors on the left-hand side. This is actually my own child's presentation. In Environmental Studies, we've been utilizing National History Day for the last few years as a way to incorporate our language arts, our science, and our history curriculum. And that is a national organization that students choose a topic centered around a theme, and we asked them that they to choose an environmental theme. So you can see hers was about the extirpation of the buffalo. Those projects, we had two that went on to Nationals this year, and we had students representing the Monroe School District in the national competition in Washington DC, which was quite exciting. So my own trip to Washington DC happened a few months before theirs. And last year in February, I was driving in downtown Seattle, having just visited the University of Washington with my daughter, and I got a phone call, and I pulled over and answered the phone, and it was like, "Hi, I'm calling from the National Geographic Society." And I got really, really excited. I had submitted an application in, I think it was December, January, over winter break, and never expected in my wildest dreams that this would become a reality, because I knew that there are teachers that have been applying for 10 years that had never gotten this opportunity. And I found out that I was selected, and she's like, "Would you like to know where you're going?" And at that point, I was like, "Oh, yeah, that's right, I get to go somewhere." And she said, "You're going to the Arctic," which had been my first choice. One of the things National Geographic does that I think is really exciting is they have this idea called the Explorer Mindset, and it really meshes well with a lot of the things that we talk about in our classrooms and in really the district, right? It's about how do we use those 21st century skills like collaboration and communication to teach students to be problem solvers, but then also adding in that piece about empowering them to go out and change the world. And we do that through the connections that we make both with ourselves, with our community, and then outside of our community. And so this Explorer mindset is sort of what caused me to jump into this opportunity. And I was fortunate that I got to be on one of the flagship, flagship ships, it's hard to say, the National Geographic Explorer. And this whole thing started with this ship years ago when Sven Lindblad met Gil Grosvenor and Gil Grosvenor from the National Geographic and Lindblad from Lindblad Expeditions. He was like, "What do I get this guy for his birthday?" And he said he knew education was important, and so he decided that in perpetuity, he would give two teachers the opportunity to travel during the summer on one of his ships. And that was the birthday gift that he gave to Gil Grosvenor. And that gift has grown too, 35 of us traveling this year. We have teachers that are heading up right now, they're getting ready to go to Patagonia. Some will be going to Antarctica in the spring, and then there were a number of us that went to the Arctic. And I chose the Arctic because I was fascinated by a place that had people. Like Antarctica has always seemed cool, and I like penguins, and I would have loved to go to Antarctica, but I really was hoping in the Arctic that I would have the chance, number one, for polar bears. It was a big deal for me, I didn't get to see any polar bears. But also, places where people really focused on how does the land shape people and how do people shape the land? And I have to admit, wasn't super excited to find out. I was circumnavigating Iceland until I really started to dig in. And one of the things that I dug into is, this is a lot like here, right? And so the things that I was learning about like volcanoes and glaciers were the exact same things that shaped our landscape here. And then I started to realize that, oh, I could take that back to my students. They've been deforested for 1,000 years, and so now they're working on forestry, and we have the opportunity to visit some of those forests. So I found that every single place I went, I came up with an idea. My roommate, there was another teacher with me. Every time, she'd be like, "Oh, you just got another idea, didn't you?" I'm like, "I did." So this is my trip. This is from my nature journal. We teach our students to nature journaling, ESS, and so I kept a nature journal of my trip, and I always start my nature journals with a map. So this is a map, and we started there in Reykjavik, which is on sort of the west side. And then we went up into the Arctic Circle, you can see up to the island of Grimsie, and then came back around. And we started on the 18th, and we ended July 27th, I believe it was. So a little over 10 days. I also had the opportunity, my family was traveling, and I decided I was going to rent a camper and go to Iceland early. So I had the opportunity to go inland, because I really wanted to see those glaciers, and I knew we would only touch the outside of one of them. So I took that opportunity, Explorer mindset, and told myself I was not going to fall in love with puffins. I was like, "That's such a touristy thing." I failed miserably, they're so adorable. This was mating season, and so a number of them had come in, and I started to think about migrating birds and the birds that we have here. And I started to think about, wow, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of challenges that they face as they're flying in. And I had this idea going in my head about, like, I wonder, like, how they're impacted by our changing climate and how are they impacted by the microplastics? Because you could look inside their dens, and every now and then you'd see something that was, you know, human-created. And then I spent an hour with the luckiest, I like orcas, orcas are one of my favorite animals. We have orcas in the Puget Sound. I still get excited when they're there, but I got to see them hunt a humpback, which was like mind-blowing to me, because it's not something that's even necessarily recorded behavior, they're just starting to notice it. And so we took that research, and we turned it into the Icelandic Killer Whale Society, so that they could then take those videos and start to identify. They think that a couple of these whales had come over from Norway, and so they were trying to identify which orcas they were, because you can, they all have names, and you can tell who they are. I visited our students in ESS last year for our end-of-the-year field trip. We went to Bonneville Dam, and so I had the opportunity to go to a dam in Iceland that's also hydropower. And it was really interesting to talk to the people there about, you know, "Oh, do you have an issue with salmon and salmon getting around your dams, because I don't see any fish ladders?" And so we, I got to delve into the questions that I had, that I'm able to bring back to my teacher or to my students, they're also my teachers, just for the record. But, and on the right-hand side, you see hydroponic tomatoes, because how do you grow anything in a climate that is Arctic-based? So a lot of these things sort of milling around in my head, but two big ones that I want to share with you are the icebergs. And yes, they are really that blue, like when the spectrum of light that hits them and gets absorbed, it's like a red light. And so you're left with this blue with hints of ash in it. And I sat in front of these icebergs that had just recently calved, and they're floating around in this lagoon. And I realized that these glaciers that are thousands of years old are disappearing. And that moved me. And it moved me in a way that I can't really express. That river on the left-hand side flooded, and just after we left, it wiped out the Ring Road, which is the only road that is transportation around Iceland. The people on the right-hand side, you can see these farms that are built up around these valleys. As those glaciers start to melt, their farmland becomes unusable. So I started to sort of think about all of these pieces. And I was fortunate enough to have another teacher that had loaned me a thermal camera. And so I started, as I visited these icebergs and these glaciers, I started taking thermal images of data that I could bring back to my students for them to analyze. And so on the left, you can see sort of the photograph of this iceberg, its glacier at this point. And then on the right-hand side, this was an almost 80-degree day in the Arctic. It was the hottest day when we were there, but you can still see that the water's relatively cold. Those glaciers quickly started melting that day, you could hear the sound of it. And I took data, purchased a weather station, a little portable weather station that I could take along, and I took the snippets of data for my students to be able to analyze now that we're back in the classroom. So you can see those two different glacial lagoons there. One of them pretty much empty, that's the 80-degree day. The one on the bottom was about a 60-degree day, and you can see a lot more ice that's left in that lagoon. So I started to like think about that and think about the 3,000 glaciers that we have in Washington and how I could bring that back to our ESS students. And so I've been developing some lesson plans this year that we'll jump into. And the other big one for me was plastics. These are not necessarily microplastics, these are macroplastics. Most of the tidal current that's coming into Iceland there is coming from the Atlantic. And these are things that I found in the rack, that area between the beach and sort of where the high tide line is. And in about, this was maybe five minutes of walking that I picked up these large pieces of plastic. And so I was really, really fascinated by this, about where these were coming. I did some pages in my nature journal about ocean currents and wondering about, you know, most of these were fishing-related, the teeth really creeped me out, but I thought it was fascinating. And then I got the chance to meet the two visiting scientists we had on board. So I'm in this picture, but I, and I love this picture, somebody else took it, because I'm way down on the beach there with the little group of people that you see. And those were my people, I found them. They were the visiting scientists from Lindblad, and Dr. Thomas Klinger and Abby Hare, who have now affectionately are referred to as Dr. Tom and Dr. Abby, were studying polar seas and microplastics in the polar seas, and they were looking at marine grazers, things that eat the lichen and the things off the rocks in the inner tidal zone. And so number one, they were really impressed that I knew what a limpet was, and I was like, "I'm from the Puget Sound, I know what a limpet is." If you don't, it's okay, there's a picture of them on the right-hand side. And then you can see the two of them on the left-hand side. So they were collecting limpets, and sometimes periwinkles, if we couldn't find any limpets, they collected 10 a day from each of the spots. And then we brought them back, and in the evening after dinner, measured them. I got to learn how to, how do you tell how old a limpet is? You count the rings, just like you do a tree. Those are periwinkles down on the bottom, because in a couple places, we couldn't find any limpets. So their research study was centered around marine grazers, which allowed it to be a wide enough research that they could, they could figure it out if they didn't find what they were looking for. And oops, so I'll leave it here, but we'll come back to that in a second. I'm very excited that Dr. Tom and Dr. Abby are actually volunteered to come out and work with our students in the spring. So they're going to be joining us in March and coming out and doing a research project on the Puget Sound, and that's because of the relationship that we made. I thought they were joking at first, when they're like, "So when are we coming out to visit?" And then got back, and we were messaging back and forth, I had some questions for them, and they're like, "So what date works best for you?" So they will be coming out to visit and work with our students in March, which I'm really excited about, and we'll be sharing that information at our Earth Day celebration, which is put on by the ESS students on Earth Day. So if you're curious what we learned, please come join us that day, and we'll be talking about it. This is my students' favorite picture, so I had to include it. I talk a lot about using our five senses in nature journaling, and so they're always like, "But what about taste?" And so here, I'm tasting an iceberg, so I could tell them exactly what it tasted like. I do have, I'm working on, you can see it in the story map there, I'm working on a presentation that'll be shared out, I'll share it with you when it's finished, but it's about how these, how this trip has influenced teaching, but I need to do the teaching portion of that in order to have that project finish. And so I'm really excited, the kids are very excited about working with real scientists and having them come out, and we're hopeful that this is going to lead to some greater understanding in the real world about microplastics in the Salish Sea. So yeah, that's what I did this summer, that was my summer vacation. Any questions? I was told you'd have lots of questions, so.
Wow.
Sorry, I talked really fast.
I know, that is just, and it, what an incredible adventure, an incredible opportunity, and how lucky are our Sky Valley students that they now get to learn from your experience? That's just really cool. I really appreciate the fact that you came here to share that. I remember when I saw that go out on the Facebook page, I was like, "Oh, that's so cool." But then when I saw you were presenting today, I was like, "Oh, I actually get to hear about it." So that's really cool. Okay, so what was your, if you had to pick a favorite part of your trip, what would it be?
The, the community that I met on the, on the ship. So I decided that I was not going to bed before midnight, and I was waking up every morning before 6:00. And so I woke up early every morning, and I chatted with this gentleman named George, and George had been a, he had been a lawyer, and he had this whole experience of traveling overseas, and so we'd have coffee every morning and sit and chat. And then in the evenings, I met people from around the world that were doing amazing things. And I think that that just really the eye-opening piece, I thought, people had said, "This will change your life, because you're going to meet amazing people." And I think I'm really shocked at how true that was. But, you know, we sat out midnight sun, so the sun didn't go down, and then we'd look at our watches and be like, "Oh, my goodness, it's 1:00, and we have a hike at 6:00 AM tomorrow morning, so we'd better go to bed." But just like really fully having the time to embrace that, we don't often get that as teachers in our classroom. You know, we're so like, "Oh, I gotta get this done, I gotta get this done." And this gave me the time to sit. And, and I have to also say, realize just how lucky I am as a teacher to be here in our school district and specifically at Sky Valley, because we get to do some creative, amazing things. And, and I feel really fortunate. I almost gave up on public education. I've been teaching for over 20 years, taught AP courses at high school level, and, and Sky Valley has renewed my love of learning, and this trip gave me a little more that I can give back to Sky Valley.
I love that. Thank you so much, Sabrina.
Thank you so much for sharing, this is awesome. I'm curious, what does this look like practically? Because you, there's a lot that you shared, and I know that this will filter into just about any and every lesson that you do this entire year. But when it comes to your course plan for this year, what does this look like for the units of study that you want to plan on? I'm sure that you're sitting here in the summer going, "I'm blowing everything up, and I'm redoing everything this year, and even having the scientists come, and how do I backwards plan to get ready? I want my students ready for when they come in." What does that look like on a, on a high level of like, what units do you want to walk them through?
Yeah, so because ESS is integrated, and we are doing language arts, and we're doing history, and we're doing social studies, and then we also have this, this is, we do a two-year rotation of content, because we keep our middle schoolers for those two years, and then when they're high schoolers, we have them for two years as well. So this year is our wilderness, wildlife, and watershed year, and next year is our Salish Sea year. So having the scientists come in the spring will almost be a kickoff for next year as well, which is kind of exciting, that we'll learn some of the pieces there. And the spring is our low tides, so that'll help for next year. But this year, being there and being in that place, I like had this moment when I was walking through a forest, and I was talking to the naturalists that I was with, and we were discussing the fact that this forest was a lot like the forest we have here. She was from Washington, too, and we were discussing it was a spruce forest, and that I had this moment of like, this is what Washington State looked like, like 1,000 years ago, as our forests were just starting. And so since this is our wilderness year, we study forestry. And so it was an aha moment for me, they don't have nurse logs, for example, right? If a tree falls, they cut it down, they remove it, and then just thinking from an ecosystem perspective. And so that idea made me start thinking about, okay, well, how are we going to incorporate the difference between our forest, right, which most often are second-generation forests that have been clear-cut at some point? And then how, how are we going to look at, well, what's going on with forestry around the world? Because for our high schoolers, we look at that CWP credit as well as our USS Street credit. And so how do we, how can we integrate that? So I started there, and I started with geology, volcanoes and glaciers, and the ecosystems as part of their standards for the high school level. And so that's, I was like, this pulls in perfectly, and we're going to look at the different ecosystems, and we're going to look at the different geology and the different animals that create that ecosystem, and then we'll move into our forestry unit, and we talk about wildfires. And so the forestry piece will come in there, and then as we continue to move in, we look at the action piece of ESS, and that's where that microplastics thread will fall through. So I've already talked and talked to the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and we're going to get some salmon stomachs. They said it was the first time anybody had asked the question. And so the kids are going to open up the salmon stomachs and look to see, are there microplastics present there? And that's watersheds, right? So that microplastics piece comes out there, and then we'll do soil samples, and we'll be looking at filtering the soil to see if, are there microplastics in our soil, and where do they exist? And so because we're inquiry-based, the students' questions will then lead the rest of the design. But I've started with the standards that they're required to learn, and then now they're going to take those experiences. And I honestly don't think I would have thought that deeply about some of those sections if I hadn't have had this experience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds like a really fun trip.
It was pretty amazing. It, I would say, you know, the, the best part is yet to come, though, right?
What about the volcanic activity? There's a lot of active volcanoes on the west side of the country that are just raining terror throughout villages and changing landscape.
We did, we visited the Westman Islands, and the Westman Islands in particular had a volcano come through, and you could still see houses that had been covered by the volcanic ash. And one of the individuals, our cultural specialist on the trip, her family had actually been evacuated from that island when that happened, and so she gave us a presentation about what that was like for her family from their perspective. Fortunately, the things that are happening right now are controlled to an area, and so there was a lot of conversation about, you know, what was going to happen. It had stopped in early June, and then it picked up again in August. And so the time that we were there, the fissure, because it's really just a fissure that's opened, the fissure wasn't doing anything much, but the teacher group that came after me got to see the fissure opened. But we did talk a lot about like society, and that brings in that social studies piece about what happens when you've got your community that's wiped away, like Gruendavik, the city there disappeared. And so there was conversation about, do, does the Icelandic government purchase out the homes for the people that live there? And how do they displace those people? Because people in Iceland are very tied to the land, they often live in the same area that their families settled and have lived in. And so that cultural piece was a big discussion as well. So that part, I felt like the volcano piece, you could see the, the impact on the landscape, but the bigger learning was in the impact on the people. Does that make sense?
Yeah. This is like a, this is a middle school question, if I was a little, a younger boy. So you mentioned a humpback whale, and you mentioned killer whales. So was there a bloodbath?
We did not get to see, so the most fascinating thing about that story I left out, but, so we were standing there, we were watching, oh, whales, right, and killer whales. And, and you can tell male, female whales based on the back. So the male whales, the, the tail, the fin that you see out of the water, that is taller. And so we saw a number of what looked like smaller, so probably female orcas, and we went out, and we were watching, and then all of a sudden, the humpback surfaced in the middle of them. And then we saw two males jut in. And so as we started to watch, what they were doing is they were trying to separate a young humpback from its pod. And this happened maybe 20 minutes, 30 minutes that this was going on, you could see the distress, the humpback was not surfacing long enough, and they tend to surface pretty deep and then come back up. And then all of a sudden, like eight or nine more humpbacks suddenly merged and came to the rescue of this young humpback. And so the orcas at that point scattered. It was fascinating to watch, and as a middle school boy, I think you would have loved it. Right? Just the, the energy and the excitement of being able to see this, I was, I was excited, because like I said, I like compact, I, I like whales, I have an affinity for whales in particular, and I was like, "I really want to see orcas." But this, this blew every orca sighting in my life out of the water.
I just want to thank you for sharing that with us. You are, you, I'm sad that I didn't get you as a teacher. Yeah, just as a Monroe school, right? I, I feel like I would have just loved learning and from you and loved being in your class, you're so inspiring. We asked the kids, our, our own children, like, "When was the last time you felt inspired or, or felt nervous about something?" And I just think that it's so neat to sit here and listen to your story, because you speak from such a place of like your own genius and your own passion, so neat to be able to, to listen to. So thank you so much for sharing that with us, and I loved watching your daughter smile the entire time while you talked and while you shared, because I just think that's so special as well. So thank you so much for, for teaching our students. Again, I'm really sad I didn't have you as a teacher, but I might just go and sneak in and take notes.
Never too late, come join us for ESS for a day, any of you are welcome, we would love to have you. We get to play outside a lot, and that, through that learning, something happens. So I will say that, you know, if there are teachers in your lives, the application actually opens tomorrow for the Grosvenor Teacher Fellowship, and so please feel free to share that, that link, because I think it's, the, the idea, number one, it's, it's pretty prestigious for our district to have a Grosvenor Teacher Fellow, and that's not to toot my own horn, that's just to say that I didn't realize what a big deal it was when I was applying. But it's also probably the best professional development I've ever done, and I've done a lot of professional developments. But this one was just, it's impacted me in a different way, so please, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. That's special. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.02, Community Guide to the Budget, and we have Ms. Brenda Hunt here to help us figure that out.
Mine isn't quite as exciting as Sabrina's, but, but it is exciting. Part of our strategic plan, part of my budget committee's focus has been on transparency and presenting information in a way that is both meaningful and useful for our community members. And I have been working with Tamara from Communications. I provided the numbers, she provided the presentation and the user-friendliness of this community guide. Essentially, it covers the same information that we heard about at our budget hearing last, in, in August. It's just in 24 pages, imagine that. And so the focus of this community guide is that it almost satisfies Objective 5.2 in our strategic plan, and that is to create a citizens' guide to the budget. And so we have done that, but part of the key elements are also to And so we have done that. But part of the key elements are also to create a transparency index and the units of measures for that transparency index. And my, my budget committee has been working on a monthly basis for about six months on creating and discussing what that transparency index would look like and how we would measure it moving forward. So as we come to close on that, within the next month or two, I will be more than excited to bring that back as well. Any questions on the community guide? I know this is the first time you've seen it, so take it home, read it. We're available for questions or comments. And look forward to hearing from you.
This looks great. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you for all your hard work. You're in the committee.
Thank you, Brenda. And thank you, Erin, as well for putting this into a digestible format. That's not easy.
And 24.
Tamara, that's right. It's your team though. Yes, please thank Tamara as well.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 3.01, Student Representative. We have Sophia.
Hi. First, I was just gonna start on how the pep assembly was really fun last Friday. I believe it was last Friday, it was the Friday before that. They introduced all the new teachers, which was exciting because I didn't realize how much new ones we had. And I didn't see all of them yet, so I liked that. And then with sports, girls volleyball was doing really good and they've won eight games out of 11. And tonight they play at Cedar Crest. And then boys football, they're also doing very well. They've won all three games they've played so far. And this Friday, they play at home against Everett. And then girl soccer won their first, their last game was their first run of the season. It gets Marysville Chucks six to zero. And then with sports, we're starting, Mr. Willie made sure our seniors were doing, being good role models in the student section because sometimes it can get a little crazy. And then the high schools hosting open houses Wednesday, 6:00 for students and families where they can make classroom visits and learn about some of the different support clubs at the high school.
Any questions for Sophia?
Sophie, I do notice that you upgraded to a tablet. That's pretty cool. You're getting ready to launch out into the
I've always had it. I just like, I never brought it. I don't know why I should have.
That's cool. And I also noticed that you have school spirit on your emails. That's pretty awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Is homecoming this week as well?
No, homecoming is not till next month. It's October 26th.
Very cool. And last time you, you shared was kind of just the kickoff of the school year. How's this, like, just the, the vibe at the school, like, yes, I know seniors are excited and stuff and
I think it's so good. The seniors are still very excited.
This is really good.
I enjoy it. Senior feels are different, but I think all the seniors are excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, agenda item 3.02, we have no public comment. Okay, agenda item 4.01. And we have our first reading of the consideration of revisions to Policy 3205, Sexual Harassment of Students Prohibited. And we have Dan here. Do you have questions?
So I'm going to turn this over to Cassandra Bunny. Cassandra has taken over, we've kind of worked, we work on Title IX together. But she's taken over as the Title IX Coordinator as part of her new duties and shifting some of my responsibilities. So we'll continue to work on things together, but she's taking the lead. So I'm going to have her introduce this and answer your questions.
Hi, good evening. So we are proposing that the board revise this policy 3205. It was formerly or currently titled Sex Discrimination and Sexual Harassment of Students Prohibited. The revisions that are being proposed are to align with the current WASDA recommended policy, which is aligning with the new Title IX regulations that were recently released. You may notice that there are a couple of policies that are mentioned that we don't currently have with our district and those are new WASDA policies as well. So we are in the process of reviewing those policies to see if it makes sense to also introduce those for adoption. So those are Policies 3206 and 5012. So that may be coming your way as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned those because that's kind of where I, I landed with one of my questions was, I know this is just first reading, so it's informational. We're not making any decisions. I just didn't know if, from a policy perspective, if it's premature for us to approve a policy where we're mentioning policies that don't exist yet, or if we will look at approving all of them at the same time. And we're just saying, hey, let's take a look at this one. Then we table it until the next ones are ready. And then we do second reading where we have maybe all of them together. That way, I, I just from a procedure, well, they're not procedures or policies, but from a organizational perspective that we're making sure we have all of our ducks in a row before we do that. Because once we have those policies, it's kind of does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that way we can say, hey, we don't have to go back and re-revise a policy that we already went on. And then it just becomes cumbersome as well. So that's what I wanted to, and we're not putting the cart before the horse being privileged with that. So I didn't know, and I'm not, I'm not making a suggestion that we do this necessarily. I just, I think that I have a concern of saying, hey, before we move forward on second reading of this, we can take a look at, if we need to do those other policies, because then if we don't, then we revise that section of that because that would change how it goes. I understand aligning with the RCWs that change out of Title IX or Green University as well, we just had to go through a whole new training again to update all of that for the staff. And so as we're doing that as a school district here, to make sure that we're kind of just doing our due diligence in the right order for that is one, that was my question. That was my other question is I was just wondering what the timeline looked like on those. So I have no problem seeing this. Just wanted to make sure we had all of our ducks in a row before we went and made it official. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was looking for it. Maybe I just didn't see it. But is there, you have a staff responsibilities in here? Is there like a requirement, like if staff sees something, they have to report it? Is that not be in this policy?
Yes, there is a requirement with the new regulations. It's even more stringent with staff reporting as well as staff training. And so likely those are more outlined in the procedure than they would be in the policy. But, but yes, those are also part of the new regs.
Okay.
One second. Jennifer, I just had a question as well. When we go through this, are we going to update staff training just from a perspective or logistics perspective as well of staff of just what those, those trainings are requirements and things like that? Is that part of the process as well?
Yeah, we actually have already assigned a course through Vector for all staff. It's an OSPI-designed video that they watch that goes over the expectations for staff as it pertains to Title IX. So that, that's already happening.
Okay. Is there a timeline they need to have that done by and have their certificate or whatever, just completion, confirmation turned into the HR department?
I think that we made the due date for all vector courses. I want to say the first week of November.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the hope is that we have the updated policies or the policies that we hope to also include at the following meeting before this goes, well, at the same time as we are doing a second reading for this policy. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I was just saying, I would prefer that. So I mean, I have no problem approving all of them if we say, let's do all of these in, in one meeting. But maybe in the next one, if we table this and say, okay, we can, we've got the first reading. Any other questions, concerns we may have?
Yeah.
We can talk about that. And then we go ahead and, and maybe in the next meeting have our first reading with the other ones. And if we did all of the reading, all of the second readings together, because that's our approval process.
Yeah.
Because again, we would end up having an approval of something where it's still, the other thing is still in draft form.
Yeah. And I think we did, did it just recently with the PEDs too, where we also wanted to make sure we had the procedure that followed the policy. So it's, it feels like it's
Well, it takes a little longer, but it's, I feel like we did a better job.
Yeah.
Because that
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, agenda item 5.08, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? Oh. Just kidding. Okay, agenda item 4.02, Consideration of Updated Revisions to Policy 2410, High School Graduation Requirements. And this is the second reading.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 2410, High School Graduation Requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 2410, High School Graduation Requirements, Discussion. Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Now we move on to agenda item 5.08, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated November 20th. I mean, dated September 23rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated September 23rd, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to Superintendent Update.
All right. So we already have a ton of interest in our Facility Advisory Committee, which Erin's done a great job. Thank you, Erin, for putting our kind of package and all of our information out to community members. And I think it's only been three days or so, roughly three days it's been out. And we're looking for 20 people to serve on a pretty intense, intensive, I shouldn't say intense, but committee that will be making a recommendation to the board here in one year. And we'll, we'll meet a couple of hours every month. But we already have 28 people who have signed up. From what we haven't done yet is looked at all of their addresses because we want to make sure that the, the entire geographic region of our district is, is covered really well. So that's really exciting. And then just the only other thing I wanted to hit tonight, from an informational standpoint, is a few months ago when our strategic plan went out, we had a little postcard with a QR code for people to to see what we're doing. After you all approved the strategic plan and every once in a while, I get a random email from somebody saying, hey, that, that do not have kids in our school district, that, hey, I just got around to reading your strategic plan, really excited about the future of the Monroe School District. And they might have a couple of questions. Most initially, I heard most about the cellphone policy. A lot of interested people there. And then I had a really unique one recent, a couple of months back, where they were really interested in Goal Three, which is about recruiting and retaining awesome staff members. And they specifically pointed out objectives, asked if I'd be willing to meet with them. It was a husband and wife that no longer have kids in the system. They're both retired. And asked if I wanted to talk about how they could support us in developing a pipeline of quality candidates from within our own school district. I'm like, absolutely. And it was because of them checking out our plan. I won't say their names yet because I don't, I didn't ask permission if I could use their names, but they've been working with, with us over the last couple of months and trying to figure out a way that they can give our classified staff access to a pool of money to help them to go back and get their teaching certificate. And they're starting with around $15,000, which is absolutely significant. So I just wanted to encourage you all by hearing that story, that people are excited and genuinely interested in wanting to give towards our, what we're trying to do, our vision as a school district. And you build something that's exciting. People want to be a part of that. So those are just a, a couple of examples. And I honestly thought we wouldn't have a lot of interest in that Facility Advisory Committee, but we have a, a, a community that wants to get involved and help us figure out the direction we're going with our facilities moving forward. So anyways, just some good news.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, Board Reports and/or Comments.
Director Barnes.
She's trying to give everybody else a chance. Nobody else really has anything. Okay, so got the opportunity to go to a few schools and just really noticed some amazing things at Salem Woods. And the teachers are knocking it out of the park with what they're doing. The kindergarten classes, they were doing rainbow fish and had interactive art, you know, with the kids. They were painting their fish and then later went back in and did the scales with pieces of celery that they had dipped in paint. So it was, it was awesome to see the enthusiasm of the teachers, how beautifully the classrooms are done, just how engaging they are. We really do have some first-class staff in the Monroe School District that are doing amazing things with our kids. So just a shout out to all of the teachers there that let me come in and observe and then to Shauna Clark, who afterwards had to send me some of those finished pictures and an email. And that was pretty cool. So I appreciated her letting me see those. Got to go with Jennifer to, up to the high school where they did, it was the junior assembly. Yeah, where they're just kind of going through some of the things to start junior year. And so it was really interesting. Jennifer and I got to sit in the back and hear what the kids in the back like to talk about and what they like to do. Overall, it was a really, it was an eye-opening experience, but it was also really good. I think that there, you know, are a lot of good things that are going to be happening. I think our junior class, you know, the majority of them are really excited for things to come. And Brett Willie just always brings a lot of enthusiasm. And he's just so good at what he does. We are incredibly lucky to have him. So it's always fun to get up there and to experience that. And then also the football game, the very first home game. There were so many people that showed up. It was incredible. And Mason Davis, that's how you say his last name, right? Yeah. He, I mean, you start off the game and you're receiving the kickoff and you run it all the way back for a touchdown. And it basically just sets the momentum for the entire game. It was absolutely incredible. Our students, student athletes are, are doing amazing things. So it's fun to be able to watch that. I'm going to go out to the girls varsity soccer game tomorrow night. So if anybody wants to join me, that's where I'll be cheering on our Lady Bearcats. And yeah, just a great start to the school year. We've got some amazing things happening and our teachers, they are showing up and, and putting everything out there. So just really appreciate them.
Just to give you the opportunity to go last, I did, there was one thing I did want to share. I did not have a chance to attend this, but I heard about it. I was invited to Jesse Crowther's, Jesse, not you, your wife, Jesse Crowther's digital class. And I was not, I planned on making it happen. And then something came up. I wasn't able to make it into her classroom, but I was really bummed. But she invited me out on September 10th. She had Terry Thorne, who is a Hollywood producer. And he is the one who brought us the Rugrats, Wild Thornberrys, as told by Ginger. And he had joined, came in and joined their seventh grade digital class for a special session. He's the former CEO of the Simpsons Rugrats Company. And he came in and basically offered those students. And I'm just thinking, this is our middle school students. They get this kind of an opportunity. I think about the presentation we just had and a lot of the things that are going on in our district. And a lot of people, I know there's a lot of complaining about, well, we see this and we don't see that. But a lot of people don't hear about some of the amazing things that are happening. And even the things that we share here are just, I think, a tip of an iceberg of a lot of the good things that are going on of saying, when you have a quality of someone in an industry standard, and a lot of times especially middle schoolers who say, when am I ever going to use this? And to put the middle school hat on, if you will, and say, well, this is dumb. I don't see how I'm ever going to use this. And you bring someone of that caliber, say, so what you're learning here, here's how we use this in the real world. And this is what these kind of jobs look like. I think for those students, it just turns on such an awesome light bulb. And so I'm excited to see that. The cool thing was when I had told her that I'm, I'm not going to be able to make it happen. And I was really bummed about not being able to go. She's like, it's okay. We have somebody coming back in again later this school year. And so I'm like, that's getting on my calendar and it's going to have glowing lights around it. So nothing else invades that, that space. And so for me, I'm just really excited to think here is the kinds of things that are going on in different buildings in our classroom. So special shout out to the Hidden River Community and, and Jesse as well.
Any other questions? I have three kids in three different schools right now. So I, we have elementary, middle, high school. So I get that firsthand experience to see some of our things with policy. And that's always really fun. And I get to connect with a lot of the office staff, which I'm super grateful for as well. During that meeting with the juniors, we heard some of their questions around the cellphone policy. And they were like very good questions. And so I know that Principal Willie and the team are also And so I know that Principal Willie and the team are also working to help resolve some of those concerns. I see it with the elementary level as well, where with my own child and then middle school, they have watches, like smartwatches and they know to put them away. And so it's been working really well. Attendance, my oldest like refuses to be late or miss school. So of course I'm like, hey, what, what keeps you motivated? Like what, why do you want to go to school? And his answer was actually, I don't want to fall behind on anything. So if that works, awesome. And we will keep doing that, but it's just really good. I was able to connect and said, hey, he actually wasn't 10 minutes late. What happens? Does that still count as an absence for the day? And so Liz at Monroe had a really great response. She said, actually, no, we go through it. We see where he signed in at the front and then we go ahead and correct it. So shout out to them. I know that they are understaffed right now, the high school. So there are so many positions in the Monroe School District that are open right now. If we all share, I bet we all have our own networks, right? So I've gone ahead and personally connected lots of people and just said, hey, we have open positions. If you love kids, we love you. Come over to the Monroe School District. But not like that, but you know, something like that. Anyway, and I also ran into more students and then just reminding them that there are so many resources in our school district as well. If they want to do band, if they want to do a club, they want to just participate. So I love seeing the activity buses. I love seeing that everyone's, it's kind of all hands on deck and we're all here to serve students. Very grateful for our district office, for all of our staff and for the entire MSD team, right? And that's it. That's my, you know, we'll go, go Monroe School District. It is 5:54 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.
Go Coops.